Good afternoon. At this time, we'd like to call the special meeting of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible.
Commissioner Cora?
Present.
Commissioner Mathias?
Present.
Commissioner Rosensky?
Present.
You have a quorum. Thank you. Thank you for joining us this afternoon, everyone who's either on Zoom or socially distanced across our meeting room. Today, we're here, first thing on the agenda, to consider extending the county's COVID-19 operations policy to the date of May 1st, 2020, which would be consistent with the governor's latest executive order. Any discussion, comments, or I will make a motion?
No, this simply extends the orders that the commission has previously provided for operations. I've worked with Barb Mossman, the HR office, on an appropriate extension, and this would get you through May 1st, consistent with the governor's executive order.
Thank you.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve this.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the extending of the COVID-19 operations policy for LaPorte County to May 1st, 2020, which is consistent with the governor's executive order. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Thank you. Moving on, we'd like to consider the resolution in support of COVID-19 3.5 aid package. Is that million? Okay. The word million is missing. A million aid package to counties requested by the National Association of Counties and Indiana Association of Counties. Mr. President?
That's fine. I mean, I can read into the record the resolution if the commission chooses.
This is the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
At the request, and I should indicate some background, at the request of the commission, my office prepared a resolution.
Sure, if you can give the background, then I'll read the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay.
The COVID-19 3.5 package, which would have provided immediate direct cash relief to Indiana counties, was being considered over the weekend. It was supported by resolution by the LaPorte County Council on Monday evening, as many county governments around the country went on record. There were some issues since that time. This resolution deals with that and puts the commission on record that in any future COVID relief or supplemental bill, that relief be provided in Indiana counties. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Cora at this point.
Thank you.
Madam President, first of all, before I get to read the resolution, I also want to thank our friends on the council for doing a similar resolution, which was helpful. Unfortunately, this was not added to the bill that was just passed by the Senate, but we are hoping that by passing this resolution and forwarding it to the Indiana's congressional delegation and then lobbying them to support this, that would help us in our county. With that, Madam President, I'd like to read the resolution. Whereas counties like LaPorte County are losing significant tax revenues, whether it be through delayed or reduced property tax revenues, much reduced local income taxes due to the layoffs and furloughs, and dramatically reduced gaming revenues at a time when there is an extraordinary demand for emergency public health and safety expenditures during the COVID-19 crisis. And whereas the National Association of Counties has estimated county budget losses around the country of up to $144 billion through fiscal 2021. And whereas COVID-19 3.5 plan offered by House Speaker Nancy Pelosi and Senate Minority Leader Chuck Schumer was the only plan on the table during the negotiations this past weekend that provided support for local governments. And whereas the bipartisan National Association of Counties and the bipartisan Indiana Association of Counties both came out this past weekend in full support of the Schumer-Pelosi COVID-19 3.5 plan, which would have provided an immediate direct allocation to counties across the United States of $29.5 billion, which would have meant over $596 million of that amount coming to Indiana counties, of which $9,743,450 would have been earmarked for LaPorte County. Whereas the LaPorte County Council and other governmental bodies across the country adopted resolutions in support of the COVID-19 3.5 plan on Monday evening, only to see the Republican Senate negotiators insist Tuesday morning on removing the relief for local government in the final Senate bill. And unfortunately, the Democratic negotiators relented as well. As a result, the final $444 billion Senate package approved Tuesday afternoon while providing $310 billion for the paycheck protection program, $60 billion for a separate small business emergency grant and loan program, $75 billion for hospitals, and $25 billion for testing, provided not one dime for cash start county governments that are on the front lines of the fight against this virus. Whereas, none of the prior COVID-19 related packages guarantees relief for governmental entities of under 500,000 population. And while negotiators vaguely pledged a fifth aid package would be forthcoming that would assist hard-pressed local government entities once again, county governments across America are being asked to take on the bulk of the emergency response to the COVID-19 crisis and yet still wait for badly needed assistance from the federal government. Now therefore be resolved by the members of the LaPorte County Commission. We express our disappointment at the elimination of the local government aid package known as COVID-19 3.5 plan, which would have provided an immediate direct cash infusion of $9,743,450 to LaPorte County. We strongly urge Indiana's congressional delegation to take this issue up with their respective leaderships in both parties and both chambers of Congress, so that this plan is included in the next supplemental package. Such a plan recognizes that county departments and our employees are on the front line of the battle against COVID-19, including our county health department, EMS, E-911, EMA, Sheriff's Department in the corner, all of whom are expending considerable time, effort, and taxpayer resources to protect public health and safety. We support the Indiana Association of Counties and the National Association of Counties in their ongoing efforts to ensure that any approved COVID-19 relief packages contain the $29.5 billion originally slated for America's county governments. And we strongly urge the Indiana delegation in Congress, both House members and our two senators, by providing them with copies of this resolution to pledge and to oppose any future supplemental packages that do not contain the COVID-19 3.5 plan for county governments, all of which is resolved on this 22nd day of April, 2020. Madam President, I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or remarks, Commissioner?
The only comment I have is besides us sending this resolution and besides us asking our congressional delegation to support it, I think it will be good for the public at large to reach out to congressmen and senators and indicate to them that this is a public health crisis and this has to be dealt at a local level, and we need federal assistance to deal with this at a local level.
I think that's a great comment, Dr. Cora. You know, a lot of people have said to us, "We're at home, what can we do?" Well, there's something you can do. Lobby our legislative officials in Washington and make sure that we're bringing home the federal tax dollars that we donate every year, whether we like it or not. So we need the money to support county government who is at the cusp of this emergency response. Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Thank you so much, Dr. Cora.
Madam President, I forgot to add at the beginning of the agenda, and if I may, county clerk Mrs. Kathy Croweback is here, and she wanted to share some of the information about the mail-in balloting and the extraordinary amount of time and effort she has put into planning this. So with your permission, we would like to invite her.
So why don't we insert in the agenda, department heads? There's a couple other department heads that are here that may also have something that they need to speak to. So we'll insert department head comments. And Kathy Croweback, if you could be our department head, elected official and department head, to come up and give us a conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Cora had contacted me Monday, I don't remember what day, and asked me if I could kind of...
Ms. Croweback, before you get started, if I could just frame this issue, Madam President.
Please.
And the reason I contacted her is because, as a physician, I see the risk to voters and the risk to the poll workers when we have election with a lot of people coming to these polling places. And as a matter of fact, this morning, I was watching the news, about 17 individuals in the state of Wisconsin, I think in Milwaukee contracted COVID-19 because they went out and voted, and some of them were poll workers. So I think we owe it to the voters in our county, our friends and neighbors, and also I see when I go to the polls, there are many individuals who work as poll workers who are really elderly and who are at a higher risk for this. And I think if we can do as much as this voting by mail and cut down the in-person voting, I think we'll be protecting our citizens in LaPorte County, both the voters and the poll workers. So that's the reason why I reached out to Ms. Croweback.
Thank you for framing that discussion.
Okay. So anyway, he asked me if I could give him some kind of an estimate what it would cost to send an application to every voter in LaPorte County to vote. You have to apply for an application to vote before you receive your ballot. And the reason for that is because we have to verify you're registered, and then we have to know if you're a Republican or a Democrat, because in a primary, you have to pull a party. So we have about 71,000, I did give you all, I think, a printout.
Yes, thank you.
Of registered voters. We have probably, I'm going to guess right now, in the last, we're getting about 200 a day, maybe 2,000 ballots back, and a number of applications. We got 200 applications today. So I narrowed it down to 68,000. And I gave you kind of an estimate what it would cost to mail an application, which is in the first section. And it takes in all kinds of, the printing of the application, the postage, the labels. And this is all estimates. I mean, this is not a solid number. It's about $40,000 to send applications to every county resident that's registered to vote. Then they have to fill that out, return it back, and then once it's returned back and we verify everything in our SVRS program through Indy, we send the ballot out. The ballot contains the ballot card, the sleeve, the actual ballot that they use to pick their selection of candidate, the voter's rights, there's instructions, an envelope to return, and it has to have a postage stamp on it, and both of them have to have a label, the outer label and the inner label. And I kind of gave you an estimate about what that would might cost to do that. The absentee applications have to be back here by May 21 to process them. That's the deadline. That's going to be about $139,000 to do that part. And again, these are just estimates. We have to print the ballot, we have to order it. We don't have 68,000. I figured that in 2016, half of the people voted. So you figure you got 72,000, 71,000, it was about 35,000 people. So I figured on 35,000 ballots, this is what it would cost. You have to print the ballot. The ballots are trying to be printed right now because a lot of the counties are doing, hopefully, mailing ballot, and we don't have that many in the state. They're printing them as we speak. You have to have the sleeve, the ballot has to be printed, the envelopes have to be purchased. I gave you costs for all that. We don't have those envelopes right now. We have enough to get us through. We have about 5,000 right now. Then you have the labor. It takes a Democrat and Republican to process these, side by side. They each check each other up, make sure everything is correct. The ballot has to be inserted for their precinct. The ballot card has to be initialed by both a Republican and a Democrat, and so does the sleeve, and stamped with a clerk's stamp, not my name, but my official stamp, that tells them it's an official ballot. All this has to be done, and then you insert everything, put the stamp on it, seal it up, put the label on it. You have to make sure you compared the application to the label that comes out of the machine from SVRS, and then you mail it. Right now, we have two people working, some days we have four. We were all caught up as of Friday. Today, now we're back kind of deluged again with some applications. But the two man team, they can process 50 applications in one day and about 80 ballots for two people. So, I mean, and then I pay them $1,150 an hour to work in there.
So, Madam President, the reason this is important to discuss this, and it is time sensitive, is if we are going to encourage the voters to do voting by mail, I don't want the staff at the clerk's office and our clerk to get stressed out at the end because a bunch of people are asking for this at the last moment, and then it'll be chaos, you know? So I think we need to handle this in an organized way. That way, we can get it done safely, as well as keeping the public health in mind and also without causing too much chaos and confusion at the last moment.
I will tell you that our application is on our county website under my department.
Your department.
And you can go there and print it. You can call my office, we will mail one to you. You can call voters, and they will mail one to you, or the absentee board has been mailing them out, too. So there's a number of ways you can get an application. I've even mailed more than one to a neighbor so they can take them around. But it's easily accessible, people have found it, and like I said, we're getting about 200 back a day. My fear is, I mean, we can send out as many applications as you want, but if they get back here, we have to be able to process the ballot, and it's very time-consuming. And if one little thing is not on that ballot, when the day comes and we count those ballots, those ballots get thrown out. They have to be initialled, you have to have instructions, the voter has to be able to sign in a proper place and note everything and make sure that they've colored. We don't look at the inside until the election day, but we give them instructions on how to color in the little circles. So, I mean, ballots do get thrown out on Election Day because they haven't done things proper. So it takes a lot of instruction and careful preparation, putting them together. And then the postage, too. And the labor, I kind of, I don't know, I guess it's the about $84,000 labor for the putting the ballots together. And I had a total of, what, 260, 261, which is just a rough number. And, I mean, we don't have the supplies to do this many, so we have to order them.
So, Madam President, first of all, thank you for putting this whole thing together. The only thing that we will be doing differently, if we do it, is we're going to be mailing in an application for an absentee ballot or a mail-in ballot. Once, whether they send in that application, whether the one that we have sent, or whether they print it out, or whether they have called and got it, we are obligated to send them the ballot, and we have to go through the whole process irrespective of the cost. We have to do it. That is, that's the law, and we have to do it. So what I am suggesting is, why have this whole influx at the last moment and make it more organized, sending them ballots? And maybe even those ballots, we could do it in phases. Let's say if you're sending in 60,000 applications, maybe 20,000, and then wait for five, six days, so that way you're not inundated with all of them at the same time.
The problem is, you have till May 21.
Right.
To get those. I have to have them in my office by the end of the business day, or we can't accept them after that.
So we have only four weeks left to do all this.
We're four weeks out to receive an application for a ballot.
Right. The other thing that you mentioned, Ms. Croweback, is that I think you mentioned that we have only five days to do in-person early voting this year. Is that correct?
Last week, the governor and the election board and the Secretary of State reduced the in-house at the courthouses, early voting, I call it, at the courthouses, basically, to five days. So it starts the Tuesday after Labor Day, or Memorial Day, and it runs Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Saturday, we do open on Saturday until 3:00, and Monday morning until noon, and that's it. So they're trying to discourage people from coming in and voting in person.
Yes.
So they have reduced it down to that. I don't know at this point. I have not attempted to call our polling places yet. I know that the Secretary of State said that all public places like schools and community centers, fire stations, they have to open. For us, they have to. That doesn't tell you what churches are going to do. And I can tell you right now, churches are closed. We have a number of churches that we're using, so, and I can't get a hold of anybody because there's nobody there. So I don't know. And I, I mean, I can tell you also that in a primary, we have very few this primary contested races. We don't have very many. I think we have some federal and maybe a council seat, a couple small ones, but most of them are not contested. So I guess you've got to decide if you want to spend that kind of money for a race that's not really open contested. It's a lot of work.
Yeah. I think the first district congressional race is...
Is contested.
... a contested race, very contested, and there's a lot of interest in that. So the other thing is, if we can't find polling places, if we can't find poll workers, if we have to cut down the number of polling places drastically, from what you're saying, and the governor and the state and the Secretary of State has already cut down the number of days we can do early voting drastically, what other choice do people have to exercise their right to vote other than by mail? I think that is the way to do it. And if that is the case, the least we can do is send them an application. And frankly, the application, sending the application is $39,000, which is a significant amount of money, but if it's going to save some lives by preventing them from having this infection and save the healthcare costs that are associated with it, I think it is something to think about, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Rosensky?
Small price to pay.
Thank you. I have to agree with my colleagues that, yeah, I also want to share that some of you know I lived in another state for a couple of years, seven to be exact, and they do 100% mail-in voting in Washington State. It is so successful. It, you know, they have developed a system, and that's, I think, where your trepidation must be, is that there is no system yet in place because this is new. But you have a lot of experience, and so do your team, on how to do the limited absentee ballots that you've done over the years. I think that this is a public service. You know, it is an American right, something we're extremely proud of as a country, to make sure that everyone has the right to vote. And for me, you know, when you look at all the other qualifying, you know, reducing the number of days where we have early voting, that's a problem. The churches and places where people normally go to vote may or may not be open, that's a problem. The idea that a lot of our poll workers, and I know because I've never missed an election, a lot of our poll workers are in that age bracket that have higher risks than other folks. So we're also trying to encourage people to stay out of crowded places. That's a problem. So, you know, the more we look at it, yes, there is an investment of taxpayer dollars in this, but it's an investment in people being able to exercise their right, and it's a right that all of us treasure. So to me, it's, I know it's going to be a lot of work, and we'll have to talk about how...
Well, I would caution you, too, because you all don't know what goes on behind the scenes, and it's hard enough with four people trying to get this done because it's so intricate. To bring 46 people in here that don't know what they're doing is a recipe for disaster. I don't have time to train them because I'm trying to do other things, and the people down there don't have time to train them either. I have probably six people that have done this in the past that know what they're doing, and it's very detail-oriented.
Ms. Croweback, this is what I'd like to say. If they send in the application, we have to do it. We don't have a choice.
Well, you can mail the applications out, which I don't have a problem with, and then you have to be able to process it.
Process it. So... But you need support, and I think there's no question, Madam President. Our county clerk needs support, and I think we should do everything we can to make sure she gets the people she needs to make this happen. And I think with the fact that, you know, with so many people not working right now, my gut tells me there'll be enough people who'll step up, and we'll be ready to do this work to get this job done, and we'll work with you to make it happen.
Okay, because I can't do this by myself. It's way over my head. Too much work, too many, and I don't even have the supplies.
Right.
I don't have any of the supplies. I've got probably 5,000 of everything, but I don't have 35,000. And I'm not sure, I did talk to Microbook this morning, they're still printing ballots. They don't even have enough ballots for everybody yet, but she assured me that hopefully she could get them to me. So...
So, Madam President, I make a motion that we go ahead and support our county clerk in her efforts to get this mail-in ballot done successfully, number one. And number two is that we send in an absentee or mail-in ballot application to everyone who has not already received it. And number three is, I think, if we have, I'd like to suggest a joint workshop with the council quickly, that way, because it's a time-sensitive issue, that way we can get the adequate financing for this put in place, that way we can get this done quickly.
Is it all one motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion, an elaborate motion, but I guess the, other than the things that were presented about the absentee application, the absentee ballot, and then a meeting with the county council to try to expedite funding, in addition that we have, we're vowing that we will support the clerk and we will find the, either current manpower or additional manpower and woman power to make sure that this is executed well and done with the highest integrity. So that is our motion.
Let me just add, and I just have one fear, to get the applications mailed out, and then we don't have the ballots to send.
Yeah. So... But other counties are doing this also, so if that happens, I would probably anticipate that the governor might push the election back even by a couple of weeks because everyone's going to be in the same position that we are in. You know, other counties are trying to execute the same.
And another thing, too, I did send this to the election board, and they need to bless this also because they're a part of it, so...
Okay. Sure. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. And then, Diane, if we can find a time to schedule that workshop, that would be great. Thank you so very much.
And, Madam President, I want to thank our county clerk for putting this together. This took a lot of time and effort to get this done, so thanks again. Yeah.
Thank you. We have other department heads that are in the room, and before we move to the discussion about COVID and our health officer is here, are there any other department heads that have something that they need to discuss while we're all together?
Madam President, Mr. Wilson from the Department of Corrections is here. Mr. Wilson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
You can. All right. Can you, if you don't mind, before we ask some questions, can you give a quick report as to how things are currently and just a status report?
So we're talking specifically just about Westfield Correctional Facility?
Yes.
Okay. Today's numbers, as we reported, Westfield currently has... Today's numbers, as we reported, Westville currently has 129 offenders who have tested positive, and we have 26 offenders who are symptomatic, and they are isolated. And currently, we have all three of the major complexes on restriction, so none of the offenders from complex to complex are moving within the other complexes. So the facility is basically locked down, and there's a quarantine to their housing units, and that's the current status as of today at 9:00, when we reported our numbers.
And how many of them are in the hospital at this time, Mr. Wilson?
I can't give you an exact number. I believe we had an offender this morning returned or detected. I think we had eight up at the hospital, but I can't give you specifics at this time.
Okay, all right. You know, the last time, last night, it was, I think, 6:00 or 7:00, and of course, they constantly keep changing. So, do you have any numbers from ISP?
I do not.
Okay. You know, one of the concerns, Mr. Wilson, we are having is that the numbers that the county health department reports are different than the numbers that are on the Department of Corrections website. Can you, can you help this situation by working with Jenny Smith from our county health department? That way, we get updated numbers. That way, there is no discrepancy between the numbers that are reported, that are being reported by the county health department and the numbers that are being reported by the Indiana Department of Corrections.
Well, I don't mind being transparent as an agency. The issue here is that we're reporting everything to the Indiana Department or the Indiana State Department of Health, and that's where the data is being collected from. I'm not sure the disconnect between the county and the State Department of Health numbers.
Yeah. You know, if you can get one person, a name of one person at WCC whom we can work with to make sure that the numbers are reported correctly to the county also, because what is happening is because of the discrepancy in numbers, and when the press reports those discrepancies, it causes a problem in terms of credibility, you know. So I think it's very important that our numbers are consistent, accurate, and so it's extremely important that we do this right.
Well, I understand that. The challenge here, though, is that I don't want to crop the numbers between what we're reporting as an agency to the Indiana State Department of Health and what we're doing locally. Now, I'd like to get some specific. What are you actually asking us to report on?
You know, when you reported the Indiana State Department of Health, why don't you automatically report the same numbers to our county health department? It's really as simple as that.
Okay. I guess I don't have an issue with that, but like I said, all the reporting is being done through the Indiana State Department of Health, and Dr. Box has made it pretty clear, I believe, to us that that's our obligation.
No, you definitely keep that obligation, but you please keep the obligation to the county in which you're located by sending the numbers to us also.
So, Mr. Wilson, there's an even greater, Dr. Cora is the ultimate diplomat, so the problem is communication. So your two facilities, ISP and Westville Correctional, reside in our county. You are our biggest employer, and you, a lot of our community members work in your facilities, taking care of their nurses, their teachers, their janitors, their officers, et cetera. Those people in our community work there, and they're coming back and forth, day in and day out. So it is our obligation as a health department to know what's going on. We don't have a funnel of communication with ISP. Regardless of what I hear on the governor's press conferences, that funnel of communication, it has been broken. We have tried, and there's a lady in the room right now, Jenny Smith, who's our nurse, she calls there all the time, and nobody will answer her calls. Now, that's a problem. And as a community member yourself, as a county resident yourself, we would appreciate if you would help us make sure that our community is protected with the information that we need to make sure that the protection happens.
I completely concur, and I can express, and I understand your concerns. You know, we've been in the community for a long period of time, both here in Westville and in Michigan City, and we've always had a great relationship with the county and all the government entities here, so I don't look forward to that to change. And I'll make some inquiries why the Indiana State Prison might or might not be returning calls, because like I said, we try to be as transparent as we can.
So I'm referring--
And again, I'll, Dr. Doss is our agency's medical director. I'll confer with her again, and I'll make sure that we have not been able to report those numbers to you as we are with the Indiana State Department of Health.
So, Mr. Wilson, the communication I was speaking of was in reference to Westville Correctional, and I know that's one of your facilities that you and I discussed last Saturday was one of your areas that you cover. So Westville Correctional is the one that we are really trying to make sure that we understand. You have a plume there of 129 inmates, and I don't know, does that number include staff as well, or is staff a separate count?
No, staff are separate.
So how many staff do you have at Westville, and how many staff do you have positives at ISP?
Okay. Ms. Mathias, will you ask me that question again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
No, I asked you if you could repeat the question again.
Okay. The question is, how many staff members have tested positive at Westville Correctional, and how many staff members at Indiana State Prison have tested positive?
I have some correct.
Are you still with us, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I am. I'm trying to get that information.
Okay.
Okay, currently, we have 18 members, staff members, at Westville that have tested positive.
Mr. Wilson, besides the inmates, this communication with the county is so important because many of the staff members live in the community, and that communication channel is necessary for our nurses to do contact tracing on those staff members because they live in the community. And we in this county are taking this contact tracing very seriously, and our nurses are on top of it. Like, as soon as they see a positive case the same day, the contact tracing is initiated and it is completed. And so it is very important that these numbers, both the inmates and the staff, if you can continue. And I'll be happy to have a three-way conversation with you and Dr. Doss tomorrow to make sure that this flow of information is smooth and accurate and consistent.
Of them, I appreciate that, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We did not hear about the number of staff at Indiana State Prison. You had that number, too?
What was, no, you know, I'd rather not commit to that because I'm not sure my information is accurate for the prison. The issue with the staffing, they can test them on their own, through their own private practitioners. So we, we don't know how many staff are actually tested until they report back that they have been confirmed positive. Does that make sense?
Yeah. No, all we want is who, how many are positive. That's all we need to know from the staff. And then we also need the contact information if they are Leport, at least if they are Leport County residents. That way, we initiate and complete the contact tracing, because testing, tracing, and isolation, that's how we are going to get over this pandemic. So, and this is very important, that we get this done.
Okay. If you guys can be so kind, then I'll go ahead and reach out to Dr. Doss tonight, and then we'll--
Yeah, if you can facilitate, between you and, between you and Dr. Doss, if you can facilitate, one individual at ISP and one individual at WCC who could be our liaison and who can get this information, this will go smoothly. It's just identifying one person and making this communication a priority.
I completely understand.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question from one of our department heads. You have 129 inmates at Westville and 18 staff, and that number has climbed over the last couple of days. And in fact, when it first was reported, our community was quite alarmed to see that number. What is your medical surge plan? So should those numbers continue? You have 3,700 offenders at Westville Correctional, so that would leave us quite a few people who could--
We have approximately, passing is 3,200.
3,200 is your population, okay. So that's about 3,000 people who could possibly become ill. What is the, what is the surge plan? Why are you going to be sharing that with the county? Because we transport to, back and forth to Westville and to ISP. Are you considering bringing in a medical unit to expand the care? Because what we're hearing is that, you know, people are continuing to show up at Franciscan from Westville Correctional, and we're concerned that our healthcare facilities could be saturated if the surge continues.
Well, I can appreciate that concern. Dr. Doss and Dr. Box with the Indiana State Department of Health, and the regional hospitals, both at Franciscan, Leport, Porter Regional, have all been contacted. We have a daily call so that we're properly managing those beds, those ICU beds. They make a determination that day whether Franciscan can take another patient or not, and then if they can't, then it's being discussed where our next available bed would be, whether it be Leport or Porter. That's been a very good piece of communication for everybody on a daily basis. And Dr. Box then was also reaching out to Beacon Health Systems over in the South Bend area to see if they could assist to that need arise. Right now, even with just the 129 positive offenders that was reported today, like I said originally, we only have approximately eight up at Franciscan at this point. And I--
Madam President, Mr. Wilson, I do know that every morning those calls are happening, and they, I think the different facilities are talking to each other to make sure that one facility doesn't get overwhelmed. So I think that system is working.
Good. Thank you. One more question. On the call that we had with Dr. Box and Dr. Doss, and I believe you were on that call, Mr. Wilson, we discussed the concern about having a contractual ambulance company to assist so that our services, who also serve non-COVID community members, won't get overwhelmed. And you, I think somebody was, maybe it was you, was going to check on a contract that the DOC would have with a private ambulance service?
That gentleman is the vice president of Lexford, who is our contract medical provider, and I have not heard back from him, but he was establishing relationships, possibly other ambulance services that would provide assistance should it come to that need.
So that would be important information for DOC to share with us, because our 911 center then would alternate, transport calls between our county department and this service of, if you could circle back and let us know how that, who that contract person would be and what their contact information would be.
That's not a problem. And when I have the conference with Dr. Cora, hopefully I'll have that information for him.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. Commissioner Rosensky, do you have anything?
Thanks for joining, Mr. Wilson. So we'll stay in communication, and if you can just identify one individual at each of those facilities whom, who can communicate regularly with our county health department.
Okay. Just maybe if you need something, you must say contact. On for that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I couldn't hear if he was saying something. Mr. Wilson, are you off now? Yeah? You're finished? I couldn't quite catch.
That's better.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure you were, you were finished with your comment. All right. At this time, Dr. Ducey, would you--
I think--
Pardon?
Mr. Cutler wanted to--
Oh, okay. Mr. Cutler? Mr. Cutler, you have something you'd like to say? Please feel free to approach.
I can wait. Like, okay.
Okay.
I will. I do want to make a comment.
Is it prisoner-related? Is it related to Indiana Department of Corrections? Is Mr. Wilson still on? Please feel free. If you could just announce yourself so he knows who--
Hi, Mr. Wilson? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Bob Cutler, Leport County coroner, and we had a couple of concerns, but a lot of these things have been worked out. Our one concern was getting a refrigerated vehicle possibly to be at Westville, and just in case we have a mass fatality there. And because of hospitals, of course, I've contacted all the hospitals in the area to find morgue space and places like that, if it does come down to that. I believe at this time, and you can, maybe you can step in on this, but I believe that you are now in the process, or IDOC is in the process of getting some sort of refrigerated unit to be on the grounds at WCC.
Mr. Cutler, I can't comment on that because I have not heard that information. I can't confirm or deny that information. I do know that the county was talking about it. I've been a licensed field worker for years, and I've talked to Mr. Reynolds at the Air Station Room. We've talked about what that might look like at some point. I don't know. I pray to God that we don't ever come to that, but I can't comment whether the agency is--
Madam President--
Any of those contacts. Of course, you do understand that we're embedded in the emergency operations center in, with Homeland Security down in Indianapolis, and should those needs arise, of course, we can make that request through Homeland Security.
Madam President, I believe Mr. Novak is on the line, and he's had communications with the head, the state director of Homeland Security, and I think he's got this resolved from what I can, from what I can tell, so.
Mr. Novak, could you jump in and advise?
The conversation I had last night and this morning with the head of Homeland Security, Steve Cox, was that the DOC is taken care of as far as this truck and stuff like that. They're taking care of that. And if it would be that the county would need to request something, they said they would be very quick to respond in that case. But they assured us, and I know that Sheriff Boyd had a communication also with somebody over at the DOC, that they felt as though they had that situation covered. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cutler?
Yeah, I believe, yeah. I talked to Mr. Novak today about that, and I believe that, like I say, we're pretty sure the DOC is going to take care of theirs now, which was our biggest concern by far in the county. And then also, Mr. Novak also told me that, exactly what he said, that if we need it, he can, he has the connections, we should be able to have that vehicle here to take care of our own people rather than the prison, and we're still going to work with the prison, of course, through the coroner's office.
Okay.
And I'll follow up with the director of Homeland Security just to see if we can get better confirmation on that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thanks, Mr. Cutler. Is there anyone else that had a question for a county council member or a department head that had a question for Mr. Wilson before we move on to Dr. Ducey? on to Dr. Ducey? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for joining. Stay in touch.
Hang on, it's not on? Okay. On in the county. Our numbers continue to go up. Indiana's numbers continue to go up. The latest numbers that come out every, uh, at 12 o'clock every day from Indiana State showed that we had a significant drop in positive testings. They also said that that was a mistake from technology not to count on it, that we still are, uh, have our numbers increasing, we're having our deaths increasing. We have absolutely not hit our peak yet, uh, with no absolute, um, reference as to when that might happen. I didn't catch Governor Holclums today, but I did catch a little of Governor Pritzker's today. And they, I know in Illinois, they're expecting the peak, uh, to be mid-May and perhaps even into the beginning of June. I'm not clear from what I was able to hear. I was working all day today, so I didn't have much time to look through this. But, um, I'm not quite clear exactly what metrics they're using to come up with these peaks. And I know there's a multiple different people that are trying to come up with this. But it certainly looks like, um, May 1st is not going to be the moment that we can all go to the local restaurants again. Doctor, um, doctor, Governor Holclum is letting, uh, from a medical point of view, they are going to start May 1st, uh, being allowed to do some of the, uh, non-emergent surgeries and some of the invasive procedures to try and catch up with that as long as there is facilities to do it. Uh, I'm not that aware of LaPorte's plan, but I know Franciscans, they've got a very detailed surge plan. I'm sure some of you are aware of it, but it's very detailed, stage one, stage two, stage three. And, um, if we have to move up into the different stages, then obviously some of this will have to be backed off because it would be using facilities and equipment that, uh, would be better served by, um, dealing with the COVID patients. Right now, that's not being, uh, Franciscans not being overwhelmed. So, I, you know, Dr. Cora put it, put it best, you know, test, trace, and isolate. And I don't know about people in this room, but I'm dreadfully worried about people starting to, uh, ignore all of that. We're not getting the testing that we need, and you can't trace if you don't test. And more importantly, with the number of people that are starting to object to the, uh, not just isolation, but even the social distancing. Uh, I know that people way wiser than me are certainly expecting, uh, Georgia to have a real spike in their numbers, and I hope that we don't see that here.
So, Dr. Ducey, would you be, um, kind enough to give us a little public information, announcement? And just let people hear from our chief medical officer of this county. What do you want them to hear from, from you? What, what's your best recommendation? What precautions should they take?
Again, I think I just said it. If you can get tested, do, and then let public health help you. But for, the problem is none of us can get tested. I mean, it's, it's, there's almost no testing being done right now. Not so much for lack of swabs and that, but the reagents are the big issue right now. So most people who have it, no, take that back. Many people who have it don't have, are asymptomatic. Social distance, social distance, social distance, and wash your hands. And I mean, everybody's heard this 100 times, but these are truly what's important. Um, don't get into large groups, don't go to parties. This is not the time. Uh, listen to your public health officers, listen to your governor. It's really important. I mean, people now are starting to say, oh, I know somebody with it, I, in, in LaPorte County. At the beginning, nobody knew anybody. Now, most of us, you know, know somebody that has it or their parents have it or something. It is spreading in our community, and we really, really need people to pay attention and follow the rules.
Aside from the Westville prison, how many actual residents in LaPorte County have tested positive? And I know the figures are pretty low.
Fifty-two.
How many?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two residents?
And that's about, you know, again, but the testing is just.
Is that because you think you don't have enough testing?
Oh, absolutely. We know, we know there's more.
Where do you think that number would be if the testing isn't?
Well, you know, I don't know because our testing is so low. Uh, I was listening to Governor Cuomo the other night, just because I was, and their feeling is that they probably in some of the areas could double their numbers, uh, that are positive. Uh, not, not necessarily all asymptomatic ones that are in there, they'll never get tested. But it's a whole lot more. I'm not sure the exact number for LaPorte County, I'll be honest. Can I guess?
It goes around 900, if I'm not mistaken.
But we had some that were tested that were asymptomatic and were positive, so.
So what's the problem with getting enough testing? Is it just lack of test kits or?
Right now, if I understand it, is, uh, again, this was Governor Pritzker today talking about this. And, uh, like I said, sorry, I worked today, so I didn't have much chance to follow up on all the recent, uh, issues. But they've got the swabs, but they can't get the reagents. And if you don't have, a reagent is what you use to mix together with your sample to see if it's going to be positive or negative. You can take all the swabs you want, but if you can't, uh, run the swab to get the results, it doesn't do you any good. And that's one of the major issues. I think just test kits in places are a problem. But I think overall right now, as far as I understand, it's more of the reagent is, is the biggest problem. Yeah. And there's different.
People show up for testing and they don't have the reagents, they're sitting home.
Oh, yeah. Well, again, what they're trying to do is, um, test the people that they really, you know, it, it's priority. It's healthcare workers, it's people that they feel need to be admitted to hospital because they want to know whether they are positive, because obviously it's going to make a difference to where they place them in the hospital and how they treat them. Um, and it's, um, and there's other people that do get it, but it's probably, it's trying to be really prioritizing. And different places prioritize different because it depends on your supply.
Dr. Ducey, just one, uh, in addition to what you said, Stan, what's happening is right now individuals who have severe symptoms are being tested. Okay. So individuals who have mild symptoms are being told to isolate themselves, and they're not being tested. So we don't know how many of them are really COVID-19 positive or not. If we had adequate number of testing, if we tested all of them, yeah, we would have had a definitive diagnosis. And also, uh, they would be more serious about isolating themselves, and that would help prevent the spread to other individuals. So having wider, widespread testing available in the long run will benefit everyone.
It's also the same with the death rate. You know, uh, people talk about the death rates in, in all these places, but the honest truth is, nobody really knows what the death rate is because they don't know how many people have it. Uh, so did they, they died at home, they died in nursing homes. Uh, they're trying to look at what they're doing right now is looking at what the normal death rate would be in New York City or in LaPorte. And then looking at how many are actually dying to try and get a feel for what's the difference. And, although they can't say it, they're attributing most of these deaths to the virus.
So, Mr. Wilson, you went to accurate numbers of the prison so you could do the testing and the tracing. Do you want the, the name of the person, I assume, too, right? Not just the numbers?
No, we do want an item. So what, what happens is in terms of tracing and all, if somebody is an inmate, they do internal, um, tracing within the prison system. But what we are interested, as a county health department, is if any of the staff members are positive, we definitely want to know the name, the address, everything. And that way, our nursing staff, Jenny and her team can reach out and reach out to the family. And so in the process of contact tracing, um, they find out whom they have been in contact with in the recent past, whether it's at home or whether it's at work. And then, um, the nurses do the contact traces, which is really a laborious, uh, process, time-consuming process, but also a very important process to identify each particular individual who has been in contact with a positive case, and let them know that they were exposed and that they, they can self-monitor, look for symptoms, and, um, and also get the testing done. So you, you had asked me, what, what, do we have enough tests? For example, uh, right now, we do testing on those contacts if they become symptomatic. Uh, but in an ideal world, we should be doing testing on all the contacts, if we had enough tests.
Have you been getting adequate information on the staff members who've tested positive from Westville?
Jenny, you would know that.
The ones that were reported. I, the Westville Correctional HR department was very good at, um, releasing the information of their address and phone number. So we have been able, the ones that have been reported, we have done their contact tracing and investigation.
But I think that's why it's, that's why it's so important.
I don't know if they've reported everyone because their numbers don't match ours.
So when you said 15, I think you said 15 staff members, what, what were your numbers?
Eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen at Westville.
He said eighteen, eighteen staff members.
But I have to say, we only do the ones that live in LaPorte County. And Westville has employees that come from other counties, that live in other counties.
There are other members of the media on our Zoom call. I see, um, the new suspension, the Harold Argus and the Westville indicator are on. If you have any questions, uh, for Dr. Ducey or for Jenny Smith, our nurse and tracing extraordinary expert, um, this is the time to ask those questions.
Yeah, this is Ted with Harold Argus. I'm not sure if this is for, um, you guys specifically or does anyone else, um, might be able to answer this question. But, um, one of the things I keep hearing from, uh, Westville is that employees are saying they don't have any protective gear or there's like shortages out there. I'm not sure if you guys have heard anything about that. I know also there's been special Bobby fighting like, you know, protective equipment for like nursing homes. Maybe would you guys be able to, if you had any access or anything, that'd be able to provide anything to the prison or would that fall in the state? Or I guess, yeah, I guess just for you guys to kind of, um, you know, if you guys got an update on the situation that's going on out there with that.
Tony Mancuso, yeah, the state, the prisons get their equipment from the state, Department of Health. Um, yeah, uh, nursing homes, armed facilities, that's from the state too. But we also help them out. We have equipment in city. So basically, we have nothing to do with the prisons, but, uh, nursing homes, uh, very home care centers, we do try to help them out the best we can.
Thank, thank you, Tony. Um, so to your, to your question, Ted, we have made an offer to, uh, both hell, uh, prison facilities in our county, that if they were having trouble with their supply, we did, we did make the offer. Uh, they said that they did not need it. Um, so, uh, we're assuming that they have gone ahead, as their director said on the phone with us, um, earlier in the week, that they are mandating that all staff and, um, inmates wear masks and that they, uh, practice social distancing. Uh, there is a concern in a health, in a facility that is so, uh, close, that when they're walking to range or doing meals, that they, it's social distancing is very difficult. But, um, we are, um, their word is that they are practicing it, and we're, uh, hoping that that is absolutely true.
Yeah, Ted, this is Dr. Cora. I, we, we are on a conference call with, uh, with Dr. Kristen Dos, who's the chief medical officer for the Department of Corrections and, uh, health commissioner, Dr. Box. Uh, we did mention, uh, about, uh, the PPE that you were referring to. Um, and I don't know, earlier on, uh, they said they, there could have been some problems, but they assured us, uh, three or four days ago, that everybody who needed PPE, they had adequate amount of personal protective equipment at both correctional facilities, and all the inmates were also, uh, given masks to wear. Uh, that, that's what they told us.
Gotcha. Thanks. Um, and one other question I wanted to ask, uh, kind of a follow-up to, I believe it was, uh, one or two weeks ago, uh, I know the health department has sent out, uh, some letters about like golf courses, um, and kind of, you know, asking the private courses, how they're kind of enforcing like private, uh, their social distancing and stuff like that. I guess if you guys heard back from them, and I guess if you guys still feel that might be an area of concern, or, uh, yeah, just kind of update there.
Tony Mancuso, yeah, yeah, each, uh, each golf course did send a letter, they recommended a plan on their social distancing and what they were going to do. They served no food, they had no golf carts. So basically, you're walking the golf, uh, golf course. So, yeah, um, yeah, they responded, followed them, so.
Let me, Ted, this is Shaw. Let me follow up as well. We had asked you, recall, in a letter that was sent out to, uh, the health officer requested a plan from each of the golf courses. Uh, they each supplied a plan that complied with the Indiana Golf Course Association's guidelines, the CDC guidelines. I believe the restriction is one, uh, for those that have motorized carts, it's one golfer per cart. There are other social distancing requirements that are being adhered to, but the department did press all four, uh, golf courses to ensure that they were complying with the governor's social distancing guidelines. And as, as you know, and as we've talked, the governor's current executive orders do allow the golf courses to be open, uh, for outdoor recreational activity as long as social distancing guidelines are adhered to. And from what we can tell, uh, Tony Mancuso, the health officer, was satisfied that each of the four submitted their required plan.
Anyone else from the media have questions?
Hi, this is Justin Keel with the Westville Indicator. Um, I was wondering, when did the county stop receiving data from the prison? And did the prison report the total number of tests performed at any previous point?
You know, I don't think they stopped reporting. Uh, the prison didn't start reporting because they didn't have any cases until, uh, last week. And then we, once we started, uh, seeing some patients at the hospital, then we pressed, uh, for a conference call with the, with the prison officials as well as the medical, uh, director. And then obviously, um, we learned that there was a problem in one building, and they took the, uh, step of, um, testing everybody, all the inmates in that building. And that's when we got the sudden spike in numbers. Um, now, some of the, some of those numbers were reported to us, so we were able to add that day, I think it was 86 or 87, Jenny, is that correct? Yeah, but, yeah, 86 or 87. But then afterwards, they did some more testing, uh, and many came back positive. But they, they, uh, reported it directly to the state, but they did not report it to the county health department. So that's the reason why, just when you see those discrepancy in numbers, and we are working, uh, to see if we can have a coordinated effort where whenever they have some numbers that they're reporting it to the state, if they can automatically report to us, that way our numbers match.
Well, I think the, the key is the numbers matching, but also that we know every staff member who lives in LaPorte County, so Jenny and the, the team can trace, and that protects the entire community as well as protecting that person's family and their loved ones. So that, that's, that's the issue.
And a follow-up, um, what is the capacity of the county's contact tracing at this point in time? How many people could be infected and you guys be tracing those contacts before your resources become out of strip?
You know, right now, you have, Jenny, you have six of you in the team?
There's five, there's me and five others.
Five, you and five others, so total six individuals are doing contact tracing. Uh, and they do contact tracing on the, uh, positive cases that are in the public. And they have been able to keep up with it. And, uh, both Mr. Mancuso and, uh, Ms. Smith, they are fully aware that in case if the numbers go up and if they cannot handle these cases by themselves, that they should reach out to us and we will get them additional resources.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the media at this time? Any questions from any of our county council or department heads, since we have, um, our chief health officer with us? Okay, great. Anything else, Shaw, that we have to do? Thank you very, very much.
Really appreciate it. Thanks.
Uh, next on the agenda is Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Marzinski?
I want to thank all my friends and encourage me to watch Breaking Bad on Netflix. I'm into my first season now, since there's nothing else on TV. But, um, something that, I don't know if everybody thinks about, your older friends and older relatives, call them up, make sure they're okay, see if they need something, see if you need to stop and pick them up some toilet paper, something. Um, a lot of people that are just staying home, waiting for this to get over with, and you need to check on them. Just make sure they're okay. That's about all, yeah.
Thank you. Dr. Cora?
Yeah, Madam President, again, I want to thank, um, Dr. Ducey, uh, Ms. Smith, and the health department. I think all of you are doing a phenomenal job, uh, especially when we first started on this journey, uh, we, we have felt that contact tracing this journey, we felt that contact tracing was such an important part. And I really feel in our county, we are doing a good job of contact tracing, and I think we need to keep it up. And in addition to contact tracing, we are also doing follow-ups. I got a report from Mr. Mancuso regarding the follow-ups. Tony, do you want to comment on the follow-ups? Can you hear me?
Yeah, because today from Ashley, one of the nurses that put that together, it was pretty interesting. I don't have the figures in front of me, but I don't know, I don't want to comment on it.
Okay. So, we'll continue to do the follow-ups, and then maybe at the next meeting, we'll have a report only on the follow-ups. And the reason we wanted to do the follow-ups was, even though we did the initial contact and did the contact tracing, if there are some individuals who fell through the cracks and didn't do the testing and follow-up, then we identify them and make sure that we take care of them. So, this is just an additional measure, level of protection. So, I want to thank you all. And I also want to thank you, Madam President, for having this voting by mail. I know you have had a great experience with this in Washington State, but for us here, I really feel that it is a significant risk to bring a lot of people out for voting during this pandemic. And to the extent we can do voting by mail and keeping the in-person voting to an absolute minimum, I think we'll be protecting the voters, we'll be protecting the poll workers, and I think all in all, it'll be a good thing. But our county clerk, Ms. Crowback, definitely needs some additional resources, and we'll definitely work with her to make sure that she needs, she gets those resources. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Thank you, Dr. Cora, also for your leadership on that mail absentee ballot. I think that that's, you know, desperate times call for desperate measures. And while we may not be as prepared as we would like to be to do this, it certainly is much better than people being denied the right to vote or being afraid to vote. That's just not the American way, so I really appreciate your leadership on that. One other thing, I've gotten lots of calls, and I'm sure my colleagues have too, about people wanting to clean their yards and have a place to put their compost. So, the good news is, as of this afternoon, the Solid Waste announced that on Monday, April 27th, they will be opening up to receive compost and yard waste again. So, keep, stay tuned to that. We would appreciate that people respect social distancing while they're bringing their waste in, but that's good news. People are out in their yards, getting their exercise and doing their spring cleanup. Again, want to thank Dr. Ducey for being here and for, there's some really special people in the room right now who are emergency responders, who are taking a lot of the stress on themselves and their families as we work as a community to respond and respond smartly. You probably saw a little bit of my Irish temper when I was talking to the prison, and I guess why I got animated is because the folks who work in those facilities are our neighbors. They are our friends, they go to church with us, they shop with us, and they, you know, kiss our babies when we're in the grocery store. They are our friends. We need to protect them. We have inmates that need to be protected too, and certainly, no one here is a correctional expert, but we are an expert at taking care of people, and that's what the county health department is trying to do. And I give Jenny and her team a tremendous amount of credit. She is not only professional, but she is determined. And when people aren't returning her call, that does get my Irish up, so I'm sorry. That's what we need to do to keep our community safe, and we appreciate everyone out there who is practicing social distancing, wearing a annoying mask. Dr. Cora, I know you're not annoyed by it because you're used to it, but the rest of us, we really are strange. But being careful, taking extra measures to keep your family and your neighbors safe. Commissioner Marzinski made a good point, that the seniors in our community, the hardest thing on seniors is isolation. It's not good for their mental health and not good for their physical health. So, if you have a senior in your neighborhood, even if you're just waving as you go by on your walk with your dog, just any kind of social interaction would be helpful. So, do check on your elders as a community. That's what Laporte County residents do well. Thank you.
Madam President, I have one other comment, and I forgot, and that's regarding the work that is being done to protect the homeless and to make sure that they don't catch this from one another. And so, I really want to thank Deb Warner and Maggie Spars, Majority Foundation. They have been like the facilitators of the home team. Director Butcher has been very helpful. And there are many other individuals who have been helpful, including Chris Tate has been very helpful in these discussions. I also want to thank Mayor Perry from Michigan City, because when it came to how we are going to fund this program to protect the folks in the homeless shelters, Mayor Perry stepped up, and he has offered to use some of the community block development grant money for this purpose. So, that is in the works. And also, all the volunteers who work under the auspices of the citizens concerned for homelessness, they've all been doing an extraordinary service, and I want to thank them all for that.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. With that, the meeting is adjourned.